... City Council for January 8, 2019. This conference is adjourned at a moment of silence.
Stand and join me in a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I'm having a little difficult time talking, so I hope everybody else here didn't get head cold like I did over the holidays, but I'll try to work through this as best I can. I hope everybody had a safe and enjoyable Christmas and New Years, and I wish everybody a Happy New Year going forward. I think 2019, we've got a good path forward. We've got some hard work ahead of us, but we know what we need to do at this point in time at least, so we've got a team that we know we can do it, so it's gonna be a good year, I think. I think we've got a lot of economic activity that's happened around the city here in the last few months, and it looks like that's gonna continue. We just opened up the Popeyes Chicken Place, and I actually went down there the night before and had the first meal, and I love Popeyes, so that worked out well for me. So as long as that kind of stuff continues, we'll just keep focusing on the financial situation if we're taking this city and work through the budget cycle, which we know occurs here right before us, so we'll be getting into the grip of talking about all the costs and all the revenues that we gotta do for next year's budget cycle. So with that, Mayor, you have anything?
Yeah, I'll just say, follow up. On the budget, at this time, the budget papers have gone out to all department heads. We're probably two, two and a half weeks ahead of where we were last year. We'll be meeting with departments, I think, starting last week of January, I believe, to start discussing the budgets. We will have the budget calendar out to you and to public at the next meeting. We're still finalizing some dates just to make sure that we have timing right and that we'll have plenty of time to do what we need to do. And then, of course, we can adjust that calendar as necessary. In regards to economic development piece, as we all know, that there will be a bill presented in the legislature this year in regards to legalizing gambling in the Commonwealth of Virginia. I anticipate spending a significant amount of time in Richmond, at least over the next two to three weeks. I'll be up there on Monday, and I'll be up there January 23rd through the 25th, I believe, as well, and potentially other dates in order to talk with other legislators about the potential for legalized gambling in Bristol, and not just Bristol, but other parts of the Commonwealth as well. And I think that's all I have right now.
All right. Council, you have any, anyone here have any comments? Bill, I thought you'd stand up and give a cheer since your Crimson Tigers won the national title last night, but I guess you're a little bit more subdued.
But Alabama, his also, his Alabama Crimson Tide also lost, so.
Well, yeah, he can't say a whole lot, right?
It's a good game.
It was a good game. All right, well, with that said, we'll move into matters to be presented by members of the public. Did you get a sign up sheet? Okay. So non-agenda items, we've got two people signed up. First, Malin Luttrell.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager. My name is Malin Luttrell, and I'm the current president of Bristol Baseball Incorporated and general manager of the Bristol Pirates. I will keep this brief, so we'll fall into loud time, but I would certainly like to follow up with the meeting as soon as possible. I'm sure that you're probably aware of the termination and renegotiation lease agreement letter that we received from Mr. Eads that was dated December 21st, 2018. Needless to say, we were quite shocked. Although as written, it is stated that the city looks forward to working with us on getting a new lease in place in January, but when the word termination is included, it brings on a cause of concern to many, as I had to issue this letter to the offices of minor league baseball, Pittsburgh Pirates, as well as the Appalachian League. Bristol Baseball has tried over the past year to work with getting this agreement renegotiated, but obviously this was not accomplished. I have many emails that document that shows our desire and efforts to try to get this done. Over the past few years, I have felt the relationship that Bristol Baseball had for many years with the city has deteriorated, which is very sad, especially since some of the reorganizations have occurred, and I understand that there has been a lot of stress placed on a lot of departments and the city, as I have lived through this and have had to make those tough, to make those tough decisions as well during my working career. One thing that I always remembered was, it is your people that can make you or break you during these times. And, you know, it's, you know, times like that, when I had to go through that process, you know, I really, you know, talked to the people and tried to put myself in their position when these situations are going through, and always remember to respect them and treat them with fairness. Since 2012, when Dr. Hippel published the Economic Impact Study that was done as to what having minor league baseball team meant to the greater Bristol area, those dollars have added up to $19,510,541. Just imagine if you went back more in time as to what that number may be or could be going forward. Also, since 1984, Bristol Baseball has spent well over half a million dollars in facility improvements and additions, as well as much equipment that is both used for the baseball field as well as the football field. The high school and various booster clubs, the Virginia High School, have benefited very much from which we were glad to do so. Tens of thousands of people have come to Bristol over the years just because professional baseball was here. There have also been various charitable organizations that have been benefited over the years, as well as the various youth programs that we have helped out, and especially the Challenger League here in Bristol, school visits, veterans programs, and assisting with the homeless programs, et cetera. Bristol Baseball would like to request that the letter of termination of the agreement be withdrawn and allow this season to go as is with the stipulation that both parties work aggressively at getting a new agreement in place for the following year prior to the end of our 2019 season. Bristol Baseball wishes to hopefully continue bringing professional baseball here to Bristol as is done for the previous 49 consecutive seasons. We're looking forward to celebrating this season and having a 50-year celebration. Let's move forward and make this happen for all the reasons stated above and more. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. You want to speak to the context of that letter?
As we've all been through this for the past year, as we've been through this for the past year, I believe, actually, a letter was sent December of 16 initially, and Bristol Baseball did not accept that renegotiation termination request at that time because it was not sent to the proper address. As we've gone through this, we've had numerous discussions with council, one-on-one. I don't think we've had anything in private. We all feel that we needed to sit down and renegotiate so that we're all on the same page. I know that myself, the mayor, I think maybe vice mayor, have been out to the ballfield. We all recognize there's things that need to be done, and we've got to come up with a solution in order to make it work and equitable for everyone. And I think, as my letter stated, termination is just a legal term. I also stated that we want to work with you and so we can continue to have that relationship. So it's just something we've got to get together and work on and try to come to some agreement.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. All right, Michael Pollard?
Thank you, gentlemen of the council. Again, my name is Michael Pollard. I live at 101 Ashley Drive. It's been a while since we've heard some updates on some topics, and I just wanted to see if I, I'll give all three topics upfront because I know that the council and staff are not obligated to give any response at this time, but as matters of significant public interest, I would like to hear those updates publicly, whether now or in the future. The first one is concerning the CBD processing, which is, has currently received all the state approvals, and they are under a deadline to make progress, so I was just wondering if there's anything that we can be told concerning that. I know that you may or may not be able to say anything because it is a private development that is occurring with local and state approval, but they are under a deadline, and I know there is a lot of public interest in exactly how that's coming along. The second topic is concerning the animal shelter, which, from what I understand, was originally scheduled anyway to be in operation by this point, so it's also a matter of public interest, especially concerning the issues that the Sullivan County Animal Shelter has been having lately. So wondering exactly how ours is coming, if it's in operation, if not, and if it is an operation where individuals can provide donations of food and such. And then the third issue of public interest is concerning the soccer field at the corner of Old Airport Road and Bottom Road because that property has recently been agreed for sale, and I understand that the use as a soccer field was purely incidental because it was a large piece of property that the city owned, and, well, all you have to do is throw a couple of goals out there and cut the grass, and you've got a soccer field. But nevertheless, that area does need a park because there is no park in that part of the town. And from what I understand, while Sugar Hollow does have soccer fields, there aren't that many, and there aren't a lot of the other things that go along with the normal use of a soccer field, and it's also multiple use with other uses, not just soccer, like the Bottom Road property is. And from what I understand, there may have been some discussions concerning alternate availability of a property, but nothing's been made public. So I would like some updates, whether here or in a later meeting. Thank you.
Sure. I can, in regards to Dharma Pharmaceuticals, they were awarded the permit on December 21st, so they have had the permit now for 18 days. They have one year from the date of the award to be open and operational, so at this point they've got roughly 347 days remaining to get that done, and they are moving forward and plan on being in operation by the end of December. In regards to animal shelter, like you and like many others, a little irritated at the length of time that it's taken. However, I did get an update on it yesterday. They were putting in a gas line. We're waiting on another contractor to come in and finish up some work, and I do anticipate that being done in the very near future, and hopefully will be, I know I've said it before, but hopefully will be operational sometime this month, if not early February. And then, in regards to the soccer field, Sugar Hollow Park is approximately two and a half miles from the current, what's considered the white site. At this point, that entire area is more or less considered commercial business manufacturing, and having a park in the middle of that is probably not the most conducive as it is anyway. You have a lot of traffic there going on Bottom Road and Old Airport Road, so those individuals who are using that now as a soccer field, there's plenty of other opportunities in the city of Bristol for people to have, pick up soccer games as well.
And I was gonna show you, I did go by and take a picture, so there, you know, if you drive by the new animal shelter, you know, it's still, it's almost finished, it's about a month ago, right? So it's further along now, but.
They're putting in a gas line right now.
Construction's not quite completely finished, but it's getting there. All right. All right, with that, we need to go into the regular agenda item. Before we do that, I think there's some changes that we need to take a motion on to modify item five.
Yeah, I would, I'd like to make a motion to amend item five to include changes to section 74-7 in the public hearing. The public hearing should be on changes to section 74-7, section 50-356, and 50-357 of the city code of ordinances. The planning commission is only required to make a recommendation on section 50-356 and 50-357. The public hearing notice included section 74-7, as is the AIS and ordinance included in the agenda packet, and it was mistakenly left off of the agenda item. So I make that motion.
Second. Got a motion of Mr. Osborne, a second of Mr. Hartley to make that modification. Any discussion? All right, please call the roll.
Farnham.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes. All right, moving into the regular agenda, then, we'll go to item two. Consider a closed session pursuant to 2.23711A1 Code of Virginia in 1950 as amended discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body personnel. Need a motion and a second.
I make a motion that we go into a closed session for those reasons stated.
Second.
All right, got a motion, Mr. Farnham, second of Mr. Osborne. Please call the roll.
Farnham.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes. A roll call vote. Council members certify that only business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements and specified in the motion to convene the executive session were discussed. Please call the roll.
Farnham.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes. All right, moving on to item three. Consider council manic appointments. Need a motion.
This time, I'd like to move that Councilman Farnham fill the vacancies on the Drug Court Advisory Board, the East Hill Cemetery Board, the Farmers Market, the Mount Rogers Commission on Aging, and the Joint Planning Commission, as well as he take Mr. Osborne's place on the Public Library Board and the Redevelopment and Housing Authority Board.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, got a motion, Mr. Hartley, a second of Mr. Wingard. Please call the roll.
Farnham.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes. All right, item four. Consider public hearing on FY 1819 CDBG Annual Action Plan Amendment. Hereby open the hearing. Staff comment.
Okay. This request involves a funding amendment to the 1819 CDBG Annual Action Plan. During the 2016-17 CDBG funding cycle, $72,000 was allocated for the expansion of Fred Hayes Park, which is along Russell Street and Spencer Streets across from the existing Fred Hayes Park. Additional funding was added later, bringing the current balance to $87,341.05. There were issues with this park that involved the Department of Historical Resources and the environmental review process, and while the city has addressed these issues to the satisfaction of HUD, it has still not been given approval to move forward on this project. Staff would like to move this funding into the home repair program, which is experiencing higher costs and higher demand than originally budgeted. The average cost of each home repair project averages approximately $10,000, and the current balance for this program is $31,990. Staff has six applications approved and ready to be contracted out. There are additional applications on the waiting list. I just got two more yesterday. Many of these homes need new roofs, newer replaced heating and air units, and handicapped accessible bathrooms, showers, and ramps. This money would be more effective in addressing the needs of low to moderate income persons through the home repair program. Additionally, HUD prefers its grantees to spend their allocations in a timely manner, and it bodes well for future allocations if monies are spent. The money previously allocated for the park has been sitting unused for almost three years. If the park is desired at a later time and the property has proper approvals in place to be developed for this use, the city can once again request CDBG funding for this purpose. And I did have some pictures to, let's see, here's a synopsis of what the funding is right now. The current, current balance is $31,990. The applications I have now that are approved and ready to go total $47,660, and then I have six additional applications that total almost $41,000. And this is just some examples of what we've done. This is a recently completed roof. We took an old roof that had serious leaks inside the home and put a new metal roof on top of it, and this was, this was just completed. This is an elderly woman who is legally deaf, living on social security, needed a new handicapped accessible bathroom, and that was just replaced. And then here is a pending project. This is one that we're getting ready to work on, and it needs, obviously, needs a new So anyway, that is the request.
All right, is that all?
Yeah.
Okay, no one signed up for public comment, so hereby close the hearing. So now we're on to item number five. Consider joint public hearing with the planning commission on ordinance to amend sections 74-7, 50-356, 50-357, and city subdivision ordinance. So first thing is for the planning commission to call to order and the commission so we can open the hearing. So you called it though?
Sorry?
Did you call your commission?
Yes.
I was having a hard time hearing. All right. So hereby open the hearing with city council. Staff comment on the ordinance to amend those sections. Staff comment.
You should open your hearing.
I did.
He did.
You did?
Yeah, I didn't hear it either. He did, though.
Well, because we were sitting, you know, facing.
He whispered. He said, "I hereby open the commission."
I'm opening the hearing of the planning commission.
All right, so back to city council. We hereby open the hearing jointly with the planning commission, so staff comment on the ordinance to amend those sections.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I have made a couple of presentations to you in the past regarding the status of the implementation of XGEN 911, and these are some of the recommendations that we have put together from the city staff in order to update the city's addressing and street naming ordinances to make them much more compliant with the new addressing structure that we're required to do, and we simply come to you with these edits and changes to the city code and just ask for your approval on the adoption.
Okay. All right, no one signed up for public comment on this item, so any comments from the planning commission other than the staff comments?
I just wanted to make a point of the reason that, because there are changes that are in section 50, and that's the subdivision ordinance, that's the reason we need the planning commission here.
Right.
And they did hear about these back in their July meeting.
My name is Michael Pollard. I'm on the planning commission. My comment is concerning one section of the code that calls for, and I asked the city staff concerning this. It calls for all buildings to have numbers of four inches height minimum stroke width of a half inch. Turns out that that is something that already exists in the city code, it's just a lot of people aren't aware of it. And this is, as the city staff mentioned to me in advance of the meeting, a great opportunity to let the public know of some of the existing requirements in the city code, such as that. If there may want to be some council discussion regarding whether or not that is an appropriate requirement, that's a different matter, but this is existing requirements, and it's a great opportunity for just letting the public know exactly what the code does and doesn't already require that some people may not know about. Thank you.
Okay. So is there any questions or comments by council before we close the hearing? Do you want to ask the planning commission? All right, hereby close the hearing. On to item six. Consider joint public hearing with the planning commission on an ordinance to amend sections 50-133.
Please close this hearing.
Okay. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
I hereby close the planning commission meeting.
Hearing.
Six, not a meeting, hearing. Thank you.
All right, sorry, thanks. All right, item six. Consider a joint public hearing with the planning commission on ordinance to amend sections 50-133 and to the zoning map to implement approved amendments to the city enterprise zone program. So hereby open city council hearing.
We also open our hearing.
Okay, planning commission hearing is open. Staff comment.
The purpose of this public hearing is to go over ordinance changes for our enterprise zone. Our enterprise zone is an economic development tool that we use for incentives. It's a state program, but it is incorporated in city code, and it's in the zoning ordinance, so again, that's why the planning commission is here in joint session with you. You all heard about this in November when we got, we actually had a public hearing in November with, at the city council meeting to get public comment on the application to the state, which was the first step. We actually had to apply to the state to get the changes approved, and then they did approve them very quickly after we submitted them at the end of November, and so now we're bringing this back to you all for the actual codifying that language in the city code. And I think Ellen's gonna talk about the actual incentives real quick and.
Okay, and basically, in the code, the changes are, we changed the facade improvement grant. We increased the value of that from $2,500 to $8,000. The other major change we went, made to an incentive was to basically put a cap on the job training grant. There really wasn't a cap in place before, so we capped it at limiting it to $15,000 per eligible business per year. And then there were some other small changes made, and they were mainly to clarify definitions and basically improve the overall language consistency.
In addition to the incentives. Whoops, sorry. There were map changes, and we also had those for public hearing in, at the November council meeting, that this came up as an application. We also, at that point, were required, any map changes, any deletions from the zone had to be, property owners were notified by the process that the state requires. So this is an overlay district on our zoning map, so it would change the boundary of that overlay district, and we are adding 45.2 acres, and that involves, let's see if I can go forward here, a small block between basically the downtown on Piedmont Avenue, between the library and the old post office, that block of buildings there where Blackbird Bakery is, they were not in the enterprise zone, and we want to include that. And the other addition involves out on Beacon Road, the pink again is the addition in our map here, mostly permatile and that side of Beacon Road, as well as a small parcel over here on bottom, in the bottom road. But in order to do that, we're limited to 640 acres for the city size that we are, and so we had to come up with places to delete to be able to stay within that range, and all the deletion are in blue on the map. Oops, sorry. These are basically just little snippets of property that's either Norfolk Southern right away or steep property that's not developable, and then on this section of the zone, this is out at bottom, sorry, I should have said that before, this is the eastern side of the city, Bottom Road and Old Airport Road. The blue here are mostly public or semi-public facilities. I think there's only one that's really a commercial entity, the store here, but two churches and the Criminal Justice Academy and the substation that BDU owns here, so those maps are showing the changes, and that's, I guess, all we need to say at this point. Any questions?
Okay. All right, before we close the public hearing, we need a recommendation from the planning commission on each of these amendments.
Not, you do that after they close the public hearing.
Okay. All right, I hereby close the public hearing. Still no one signed up for public comment. Hearing is now closed, so now we go to planning commission action items.
Hearing as well.
Thanks.
I move to recommend the changes to the city code sections 50-356 and 50-. and fifty dash five three seven of the city subdivision ordinance. Is that three five seven or five three seven? The agenda says that.
That should be three five seven, sorry.
I move to make a recommendation to accept changes, city code sections fifty dash three five six and fifty dash three five seven of the city subdivision ordinance. Second.
Corbett?
Go ahead.
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Pennington?
Yes.
And I move to recommend accepting changes to the, do we need to do the code changes or just the map?
Changes and the map.
Changes and the map. I move to recommend accepting changes to the city code section fifty dash one three three and to the zoning map for enterprise zone program.
I'll second that.
Corbett?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Pennington?
Yes.
Now you can adjourn.
We officially adjourn, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item seven, consider approval of FY eighteen nineteen annual action plan amendment, staff report.
Basically, I'm asking for approval to amend the CBGG annual action plan to transfer funds to the home repair program, and to see if you had any questions about the earlier presentation.
All right, no one signed up for public comments, so do I have a council motion?
I move that we approve the amendment to the annual action plan for FY eighteen nineteen.
Second.
All right, motion, Mr. Osborne, second, Mr. Farnum. Any discussion?
All of these are homeowners, correct? They have to prove that they own the home.
Yes, they do.
And they have to meet certain criteria.
Yes, they do.
To qualify for these funds.
Yes. They have to own their home, they must be income-eligible, they have to have homeowner's insurance. I think those are the main ones.
Now, the council, questions or discussion?
And does that leave you any money left for any of the parks? This takes in all the money you have set aside for parks. Am I correct on that?
For the park, for, this money was basically set aside for the one park, which has gone through several different ideas for the park. But the bottom line is, that money is sitting there, it's going on three years, we do need to spend that money if we decide, and plus, we don't have firm approval from HUD, basically, to do something with that property yet. So that money's not going to be used anytime soon. Now, what we can do is, if we find that we can use that property for a park and we want to do it, we can allocate money for it in the next year.
Okay, but if ma'am researches me correct, we received CBDG money for parks this fiscal budget cycle, did we not?
No, not for parks. We requested this funding in the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen cycle. There was none requested last year for parks.
So this is just money that's been carried forward?
Yes.
Yeah.
And every year, we put in our annual action report, and we can request what we want, you know, as long as it's an eligible project, and parks are one of them.
Okay. Are there any other questions or discussion? All right, please call the roll.
Farnum?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
All right, item eight, consider first reading of an ordinance to amend sections fifty dash three five six and fifty dash three five seven of the city subdivision ordinance. Staff report.
Also, in your packet is the seventy-four dash seven, it's all one in ordinance.
Seventy-four dash seven, I'm sorry, I missed that.
Right.
So the Planning Commission gave their recommendation on their part, and unless you all have any of the questions, I'm not sure if Mr. Eads needs to read anything on it or what.
Pursuant to section four point oh nine of the Charter of Council, the city manager determines that the ordinance is overly lengthy and sufficient. Public access has been given for those documents, the ordinance can be read by caption only.
Okay. All right, no one signed up for public comment on this item, so do I have a council motion second for caption only?
I would move that we read the ordinance by caption only at first reading.
And a motion, Mr. Hartley?
Second.
Second, Mr. Osborne. Okay, any discussion? Okay, please call the roll.
Farnum?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
So first reading of the ordinance?
Title amending Bristol, Virginia code standards for street names and addressing, and ordinance amending chapter fifty, article three, subdivisions, sections three fifty-six and three fifty-seven, and chapter seventy-four, article in general, section seven.
All right, item nine, consider first reading of an ordinance to amend section fifty dash one three three of the city code, enterprise zone amendments. Staff report.
Just if there are any questions for Ellen and I, or I, on either the text incentives or the map, I'm glad to answer those.
Okay, no public comments, sign-ups for this one? Need a council motion in a second by caption only?
I move that we have first reading of the ordinance by caption only.
All right, motion, Mr. Hartley?
Second.
Second, Mr. Farnum. Any discussion? All right, please call the roll.
Farnum?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
All right, reading the first ordinance by caption only?
Amending Bristol, Virginia code for enterprise zone, and ordinance amending chapter fifty, article two, zoning, section one thirty-three, and the Bristol, Virginia zoning map.
All right, item ten, consider approval of termination agreement and release for New Life Incorporated. Staff report.
Counsel, I believe it was in January of two thousand and fourteen, New Life and the city entered into a performance agreement whereby New Life was provided one hundred and ten thousand dollar grant from the Virginia Economic Development Partnership if they met certain requirements under the performance agreement that they signed that day. They did default on that performance agreement, and due to the default on that performance agreement, the state is asking that money to be paid back. The city had been in negotiations with New Life for a period of time. Eventually, the Virginia Attorney General's Office got involved, probably sometime in the summer, and from the summer through December, between myself, the AG's office, and the attorney for Mr. Greer of New Life, we have come to a resolution that New Life will pay back the one hundred and ten thousand dollars to the treasurer of Virginia, and at that point, the city will release any lien that it has in regards to the property located out on Gay City Highway. And the IDA met today and approved the agreement, and the IDA signed the agreement initially as well.
Okay, no one signed up for public comment, so what's the pleasure of counsel on this item? Need a motion, a second.
I move to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Osborne?
Second.
Second, Mr. Farnum. All right, council discussion.
He has made arrangements to settle this, correct?
That's correct.
He has not.
We will not sign the certificate of satisfaction until we're authorized to do so by the AG's office.
Okay, with that being said, I'd like to table this until the payment has been paid in full.
Well, nothing's going to be released until it's paid. This is just a, this is a formality, so that when it is paid, we can sign the certificate of satisfaction and everybody can wash their hands and move forward.
I mean, we enter into these agreements and people just fail to hold up to their end of it, and we have got to do a better job at the negotiations that we go into and making sure that people comply. And I understand that, you know, this could be done tonight and probably will be, I'm not going to say it's not going to be, but I believe that stuff like this, which is my personal opinion, should not come before us until they have proved final payment. Because this guy could get with his attorneys and they could drag this out for another who knows how long.
His attorney is the one who proposed the agreement, drafted the agreement, and sent it to the AG's office. They've been in negotiation with the AG's office for an extended period of time at this point, probably since, I want to say, September or October. And nothing, all because you approve this tonight doesn't mean that anything happens. If they don't pay it, we don't release anything. It requires their payment in order for anything to be released. I can tell you that myself and the attorney for Mr. Greer had difference of opinions on how things would work, and they would not agree to pay anything until the city agreed to release something upon payment. And by operation of law, if it's paid, we can, at that point, if for whatever reason we chose not to release a lien, they would have every right to sue the city requiring us to release that lien if it was showed that it was paid in full satisfaction. So this is nothing more than an agreement in paper that I still, to this day, don't know why we need, but they are not going to pay it until this is signed off on by city council, saying that we will release the lien. And if he doesn't pay, we don't release the lien.
If he doesn't pay, then we foreclose on the property.
We need to go into closed session about that because there are issues in regards to that, we've talked about it before.
Where are we at on the eighty thousand dollars balance?
On?
I thought that was a hundred and ninety thousand dollar deal.
It was, they paid eighty thousand cash up front.
Okay.
And that property, the building, it's actively for sale.
That's correct.
And all the materials that are stored in there have been removed?
Have been removed, and the state has been in the building and confirmed with the AG's office that it has been cleaned.
But the property will never, never be able to be sold if the city still has a...
No, the property can be sold.
A lien on the property because of a contractual...
No, the property can still be sold, there's nothing...
Nobody in their right mind's going to buy the property as long as there's a lien on the property unless they know that lien's been cleared. I guess I would not go buy that property unless I know that lien's cleared.
No, because if you go, if you have a mortgage on your home and you go sell your home, there's a lien on your property, and then that lien will get released at closing. So people buy property every single day with a lien that's placed on the property, so there's nothing preventing anyone from buying this property today with this lien.
Well, you just said, you just answered my question, it's not going to be sold, you're not going to go to a closing transaction, and I'm not going to be the buyer.
Right, exactly.
Until the lien, so it's not ever going to be sold.
Right, money will not, right. Once money exchanges hands, what happens is, those liens get paid off in order, and the city will eventually get a check at closing. We either get a check now, the state gets a check now, or it's wait until it's sold. And, but at some point, there will be a check coming to the city, it's just some, or the state, I should say, it's just a matter, is it going to be now or is it going to be at closing?
So if you're a commercial real estate agent, and I know I've got one to my right, I'm sure you've got to disclose the fact that there's a lien currently on this property that the city holds, and so it's going to really water down the discussions on an interested buyer when they know a lien's there until they understand more about that. So this kind of pushes this transaction along to allow the property to be sold by allowing the lien to be relieved.
I mean, that's one way to look at it, but the lien would be disclosed at closing by the closing agent's attorney, and that's when liens are disclosed prior to closing.
Okay. If my agent ever waited till closing to tell me there's a lien on a property, he would never be my agent again, I just want to make sure that's pretty clear. So there's a, you know, there's a mode of doing business, I'm just saying, you make it really hard on the, on the market to sell a piece of property when there's a lien on it, nobody knows about it or it's not cleared. You're going to lose a lot of people's interest in that property until you release that lien. So this allows that lien to be released.
This allows a lien to be released, right.
So what I'm trying to say is, the chances are, that property's going to sit there and continue to sit there and not be sold because it's got this lien on there that people know about, whether the agent tells them or not, it's going to really get people nervous that there's a lien on there that won't be cleared. Potentially.
Potentially.
So it makes the transaction very hard.
At closing, potentially.
At closing. Is there anything else contractually that, that we have to do to comply with the state AG's office?
No, we've, I've worked it out with AG's office, just need council approval.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion from anybody? All right. Can we remember now who made the motion, we had a motion in a second, didn't we?
I made the motion.
Motion, Mr. Osborne, second, Mr. Farnum, okay. Please call the roll.
Farnum?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
No.
Mumpower?
Yes.
All right, item eleven, presentation of landfill study, SCS engineers.
Counsel, I'd like to introduce to you Bob Dick and Vida Quinn with SCS Engineering. They, they have been doing a landfill analysis for us for an extended period of time, I think they came on board late August, first part of September. And the reason they came on board is due to the fact that last year, we were notified by the Auditor of Public Accounts that the city of Bristol was one of the most fiscally distressed, or the most fiscally distressed locality in the Commonwealth of Virginia. And by having that designation, we were allowed to have some funds from the Commonwealth of Virginia to hire some experts in fields that we felt were needed. As the APA has stated, and as we agree, the two main reasons that the city is in its current fiscal distress is the falls and the landfill. So Vida and Bob and their team have looked at the operations of the landfill, and will be making some recommendations to council going forward, plus, there will be some other analysis done between now and the end of June in regards to the operation of the landfill. If, I want to make it clear here that when people think about the city of Bristol and they mention the falls, they think that's probably the biggest mistake that the city has ever gotten itself into. I can tell the public right now that the landfill decision will cost the city more money than the falls will ever cost the city, and as it stands right now, it has cost the city more money than the falls has ever cost. At this point, this landfill has cost the city roughly eighty-five million dollars. And there's currently thirty-five million dollars in debt associated with the landfill. Twenty million dollars in debt was written off two thousand and sixteen, and it's a, it's truly crippled the city with what it, what it has done, and these are going to be some of the first steps in remedy that situation for the city and for its citizens, so that we can move forward in a very cost-effective manner to make sure that we do not get into these situations again.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Eads. Again, pleasure to address you gentlemen here this evening. My name's Bob Dick, SCS engineers. My colleague, Vida Quinn, thank you, and I, and SCS engineers have prepared a presentation to step you through some issues this evening on the independent cost analysis of the solid waste operations for the city of Bristol, and specifically, the solid waste enterprise fund. And after that, we'll be available to answer any questions or participate in any discussions that the council or staff may have. Before we get started, let me just introduce myself quickly, Bob Dick with SCS, I'm vice president, have been with the firm for twenty-nine years, civil engineer by education, and a landfill engineer for about the last twenty-nine years, working on projects in the Commonwealth of Virginia, up and down the mid-Atlantic, as well as these type of valuations, financial... financial analysis, and due diligence exercises in the solid waste. Ryan Duckett, the project manager, isn't able to be here this evening, but he was instrumental in all the analyses that we performed. And my colleague Vida Quinn is a utility financial ratemaking expert with experience both in municipal government and looking at solid waste valuations and ratemaking activities. The company has, we were formed in 1970. We've definitely developed a niche in the solid waste market and we've had a presence in the Commonwealth of Virginia for nearly 50 years. And we've worked for many cities and counties in Virginia and up and down the mid-Atlantic as well as throughout the US. So just quickly, let me tell you some things that I suspect you already know, but just to go on record. The city of Bristol has a solid waste enterprise fund. An enterprise fund is expected to operate like a traditional business. For the city of Bristol, there's two divisions or what we call cost centers. There's a collection division and a disposal division. As you might expect, the expenses for those two divisions have to do with personnel, equipment, things that it takes to operate the integrated solid waste management facility, things like fuel, pumps, and everything that's involved in the collection of solid waste and disposal of solid waste at that city-owned and operated facility that encompasses all the operations and maintenance, capital expenses, things like lining systems and infrastructure, roads at the integrated solid waste management facility. And there is debt service as well in the expenses. And just to talk broad, big-picture numbers, the expenses for the solid waste enterprise fund have averaged about $6 million per year over the past five years or so. As you might expect, let me just give you a briefing on those two divisions. The disposal division's responsible for integrated solid waste management facility. You may hear me refer to that as the landfill. And the revenues there under the disposal division come from tipping fees. So customers that bring their solid waste to the facility pay a fee to dispose of waste and other materials there. There's also mulch and compost sales that the city gleams revenue from. And there's some recyclable materials that can be recovered and sold to secondary markets. And so the revenues include some nominal monies coming in from recycling sales. Let me just briefly touch on the characteristics of the landfill there. There is a quarry waste disposal unit we call Permit 588. It opened in 1998, so it's been in operation for approximately 20 years. The remaining life of that quarry disposal unit is approximately 27 years. That's based on a certain waste acceptance rate, how fast the solid waste is being placed in there, and also what compaction ratio or density is being achieved in there. Right now, the city facility brings in about 175,000 tons in annual waste that's placed in that cell. There's some additional materials that come to the facility that don't get disposed in the working face, things like brush and leaves and grass that are composted or mulched separately. There's an old landfill, Permit 498. It's an inactive landfill. It operated from 1986 to 2002. It has not been closed yet. Landfill mining is being undertaken to reclaim soil from that unit. Why that's relevant to the discussion today on the financial circumstances of the fund is there's about a $3.1 million expense required to commence closure of that old landfill. And it's required by the state regulatory agency to be closed in 2020. Just a brief synopsis of the solid waste collection division. It does exactly what it sounds like it does. It collects solid waste for residential and some institutional and commercial activities within the city. The revenues for the solid waste collection division are essentially the residential collection fees that are assessed to residents. There's about 7,000 accounts that the collection services within the city. And the collections programs provide household solid waste, MSW, pickup, bulky waste, those are things like couch or furniture, yard waste composed of brush, leaves, or grass. There's a weekly service are provided to the residents by the collections division. The city provides a cart for uniform collection. And based on my review of the services provided and my knowledge of other surrounding municipalities and cities, I have to point out that the city of Bristol provides an extremely high level of service for the residents. Residents can set out a lot of discarded materials at the curb and the city finds a way to collect those and dispose of them in an environmentally responsible manner. The collection does have several drop-off facilities for recyclables, both commingled recyclables and cardboard. And those facilities also enable residents to drop off household hazardous waste and electronic waste in select situations as well. I'm going to turn it over to my colleague Vida, and she's going to step you through some of the financial circumstances and facts about the current status of the solid waste enterprise fund.
Hi, I'm Vida Quinn with SCS Engineers. A bit about my background that Bob already touched on. I'm the Director of Management Services for SCS Engineers, which is their financial, economic, and management consulting services practice. My experience specifically is in working with local governments to develop financial sustainability solutions, working with both utilities and general governments. And that's the role that I play in this project. A bit about our understanding of the financial background of Bristol. In the past, since the landfill opened in 1998, there have been very few rate increases. In fact, from 1998 to 2009, there were no rate increases. The council has historically been averse to inflationary rate adjustments during those years. The current rate that the residents pay is $22 per month to have their waste collected. But the city is facing rather significant rate pressures now. One of the more notable ones is that the majority of the waste that comes to the landfill is coming through certain haulers, largely from other municipalities and some commercial haulers that have negotiated fees with the landfill. And these tipping fees are artificially low. They, again, because they have been negotiated, were not meant to actually reflect the true cost of service. So what you have is essentially a loss on every ton that is entering that landfill, or at least the majority of it. Additionally, as Bob mentioned, the DEQ financial assurance estimates right now are in the range of about $19 million. Some of that, as he mentioned, about 3.1 million, is becoming payable in the next fiscal year. There are two major things that I'll touch on that I think are the biggest problems that the city is facing right now and probably why we're here, why we're here today. The fund is responsible for $35 million in debt, and we'll get to the nature of that debt in a moment. It has been used to pay for capital. But a lot of that capital is things like landfill liners, which in the nature of a landfill is something, or in the nature of this landfill in particular, these liners need to be added to about every three years. But we're financing this over a long-term debt that's 20 years. So this is putting significant pressure on residents when that debt continues to accumulate every time another one of those landfill liners is financed, rather than paid for in cash, which is how a landfill would traditionally handle these types of capital. Additionally, because the debt has become rather cumbersome, until I believe this fiscal year, the payments that have been made on that debt have been interest-only, meaning that the principal continues to accrue. So this 35 million has been accruing since the landfill opened in 1998. Additionally, the fund is indebted to the general fund, meaning that the general fund has been giving annual transfers to the solid waste fund to be able to keep them operational. In 2016, about $22.1 million was written off of the fund's debt to the general fund. At that time, as we understand it, the fund was about $38 million negative in their net position. Currently, the fund is still about $20 million negative in their net position. The other complicating factor, when you notice the nature of the debt, is that it's general obligation debt. If a utility or an enterprise fund is operating independently, quite often when they finance capital projects, they would do so by means of revenue bonds, which were done, which would be done with the backing of the revenues from the system. But it has debt service coverage requirements. As a solid waste fund has really never truly been independent and never been financially sustainable, they wouldn't be able to issue revenue bonds. So this debt is general obligation debt, which is issued under the full faith and backing of the general fund. Meaning that that lessens the amount that the actual city has available to be able to borrow. In fact, at this point, the general fund and the city as a whole is within a couple million dollars of its debt ceiling, meaning that this city no longer has the ability to borrow because of the debt that the landfill has been responsible for. One of the ways that we can look at the health of the fund is to compare revenues versus expenses. Just like in your personal finance, how much money do you make versus how much are your bills? Initially, looking at this, we see that the fund has revenues, and this was in fiscal year 2018, of $6.9 million. But it's showing expenses of $6.2 million, which on the surface would look like the fund is actually running at a cash flow surplus. So what we do next is take a look at what comprises those revenues. You notice this blue triangle here is bond proceeds. Bond proceeds would be money from the issuance of debt that's left over to be able to pay for certain capital projects, which, as I mentioned, ideally would have been cash funded. So if we take that away, what we're left with now is revenues of about $6.2 million, a break even with expenses. But if we take another look at the revenues and this brown triangle, a big chunk of that is general fund transfer. Again, not a one-time infusion, but an ongoing transfer in from the general fund to the utility fund, and it's not being supported by actual revenues from the system itself. If we take that away, we get a much clearer picture of the utility's health. The revenues coming in are about, the true revenues from the system are about $4.8 million versus expenses of about $6.2 million. Which means that the solid waste fund is running at a net loss of about $1.4 million in fiscal year 18 and somewhat annually. Largely, though, if we look at the nature of the expenses, it's due to debt service, which is larger even than the cost to operate and maintain the landfill. We'll get to this in a moment, but the average debt service payment that the utility is facing in fiscal years 2020 through 2028 is about $2.2 million a year. And as we talked about, this is on a $6 million expense budget. So I guess that goes to explain why we're, why we're here, why we've been asked to come and talk to the city. Our goal is to develop a financial and operational management plan. It's going to allow the city to do three things. To get to a place of financial sustainability where you can satisfy all of your operating and capital requirements. Not only in the current fiscal year, which unfortunately is how the city's been having to operate until now, but into the foreseeable future throughout a projection period and making a plan to eventually retire this debt. We want to, somewhere in that plan, be able to get the utility's rates and the tipping fees or anything else that's required high enough that we can reduce the solid waste fund's dependence on the general fund. At the same time, it's important that the utility minimize its rate increases to its customers. At no point do we want to make their utility bills so high that they are unable to even afford solid waste service. The key issue is affecting the rates, what's really putting pressure, upward pressure on the rates. Like I mentioned, the landfill lining, this is about $2.5 million every three years. As I spoke briefly about, the haulers that have negotiated tipping fees that are less than the cost to service, cost of service, less than essentially the cost to actually take the waste to the landfill and for the solid waste fund to be able to dispose of it. And then the need to make contributions to closure and post-closure reserves, and I would add to this, the need to pay in this upcoming fiscal year potentially $3.1 million enclosure costs. And as I also mentioned, the average debt service in the projection period is about $2.2 million per year. Going into this study, we requested specific financial data from the staff so that we could get a good idea of the financial picture. We looked at the fiscal year 2018 budget and actuals, the budget for 2019, the capital program, which at this point is restricted to what we're calling critical capital needs. Essentially, only landfill lining at the landfill and cart replacements for the collections program. We spoke with staff about the closure and post-closure costs and how soon they think that they would have to incur these expenses and the level of transfers into a reserve fund that they feel like, they feel would be necessary for them to be able to cover their liabilities in the near and long term. We included the debt service amortization, amortization schedules, it's getting late, and the beginning fund balances as of the start of fiscal year 2018. We then input all of that data into our revenue sufficiency model. Revenue sufficiency sounds like a made-up term, but really it's just the fund's ability to be able to pay its bills, its cash flow modeling. So it's as simple as how much cash is coming in and how much cash is going out. Given a starting fund balance, if we have some money in the, in the bank, we add some to it and we take some away, we would hope that your position would improve over time rather than get worse. So in this model, if cash in, like I said, is greater than cash out, you're operating in a cash flow surplus. In that case, your fund balance increases over time, which is obviously a sustainable plan. Essentially, you're adding to your savings. Conversely, if the cash out is greater than the cash in, you're operating in a cash flow deficit. "You can spend more than you make," my old boss used to say, "as long as you have a really big savings account." And that's a situation that I think that the city and the utility is facing now, is that there is no room to operate in a cash flow deficit because there is not really any money left. There's no fund balance to continue to decrease. The plan in the long term would not be sustainable. In this case, the fund itself currently is not sustainable. Scenario one, what we're calling it, is our baseline. This is a diagnostic look at the health of the utility without doing anything or with business as usual. What that means is that if we're historically averse to implementing annual inflationary-like increases, then we look at it from a perspective of what would happen if we had no rate adjustments throughout the projection period? If we kept our rates the same, both for our collections as well as for any haulers or any gate rates at the landfill? And what happens here, this graph is looking at our cash flows, our cash out versus our cash in that we just talked about. The green line is the cash in. The red bars are the operations and maintenance expenses, the ongoing just operations of the collections program and the landfill. And the gray shaded area is the capital expenditures. You can see that every couple of years there is some spending on those landfill liners and cart replacements. Any year that the bars go above that green line, you're spending more than you make, which again would be drawing down your fund balance. In this case, we're really just looking at the cash balance that the fund has available to it. As you can see, by fiscal year 2020, that cash balance is completely exhausted. So then another way to look at it would be to say, since we do think that the landfill is a big part of this liability, what would happen if we just isolated the collections program itself? And there, if we imagine that there is no landfill and there is no landfill liner costs, there is none of this contribution to closure and post-closure reserves, even if all of that went away tomorrow, there is still $35 million in debt that has to be paid. So in this scenario, it's what if we just had the collections program, but we still recognize that there was a need to pay this $2.2 million in annual debt service? In this case, In this case, we are developing a rate plan. It says that the residential rates would go from $22 to $20.60 in fiscal year 2020. This allows our cash in to stay even or above our cash out, and lets the cash balance remain positive in each year of the projection period. I know it looks like there's nothing there in 2027, it's just that it's so close to nothing. In fiscal year 2028, you'll notice that that fund balance seems to increase slightly, and that's because we have some debt that's dropping off there. I would just urge the council to think in terms of, we just really need to get you to 2028. After that, I think that it will be a lot more easy for the solid waste fund to be able to accrue some reserves, to be able to plan for the future. Wanted to quantify for you the impacts of not having done rate increases in the past. It's a little hard to see from a distance, but this tracks the rate increases that Bristol has done since 1998 and the projected increases over the next two years. I didn't point that out on the last slide, but it really does say that 2020 you will go up to $28.60, but there's another significant rate increase that would need to happen in fiscal year 2021. So looking at those rate increases through fiscal 2021, on a nominal basis, this is just a cumulative change in rates, it looks as though Bristol has been exceeding the CPI. The CPI is the Consumer Price Index. This is not the US CPI that you're used to hearing about as far as inflation. This is a component of that index. It's called the Garbage and Trash Series, and it really monitors the cost to the average household of solid waste services year over year. So comparing those two on this graph, I'd like to contrast that with the time value of money. Taking those same level of inflationary adjustments, assuming that this is what a resident had paid in 1998, had there been inflationary-type rate adjustments, this is what they would have paid by 2021. The difference being, they would have gotten there paying about 3% more annually. These larger rate adjustments that the city has been experiencing recently and will continue to experience over the next couple of years are simply to catch you up to where inflation would have gotten you by 2021. That's why with any of these rate scenarios that we recommend, it will take you two years to catch up to inflation, but it's incredibly important that this mistake does not happen again, and the council consider the need for inflationary-type rate adjustments for the foreseeable future. So just a summary of our recommendations. We would recommend that you adopt a financial management plan, not just one year or two years of rate adjustments, but a plan to commit to the long-term sustainability of the solid waste fund. It's going to involve a significant collection rate increase. The increase will be anywhere from $7 to $21 per month in fiscal year 2020, and you will be facing a similar increase in fiscal year 2021. Again, like I said, it is critical that you also consider adopting inflationary-like rate adjustments each year thereafter to avoid having large rate adjustments in the future. Also, there's a lot that I think council needs to consider about revenue enhancements, potential operational changes, and anything else that can be done to enhance the revenues for the disposal division and to make the solid waste fund in the long term financially sustainable. Some other things that I would hope that the council would consider is that the rate structure that's currently being charged to the residents was last updated before 1998. We have no idea about the actual cost necessarily to serve the residents. We know how much is allocated per account, that they pay $22 a month, but there's potentially ways that you could mitigate some of the cost or some of the impact of these rate adjustments on the average customer by looking at how those costs are allocated, to collection, to disposal, to some of the other services. I should have mentioned this before, but Bristol has a very high level of service. Essentially, if you put anything by the curb, someone is going to come and pick it up, and that is certainly not the case in a lot of municipalities. It is not the case, even as I understand it, in many places within the county. There are a lot of solid waste services that right now the residents may be paying anywhere between $45 and $55 a month for one can, and there is no additional yard debris, there is no bulk waste collection, there are all things that would be charged by additional fees. All of that right now is included in the base rate, but it may not be something that all of the customers necessarily take advantage of. So given, excuse me for one moment. So given the chance to look at alternate rate structures, it might be possible to establish a variable rate structure. It could be anything from looking at different sizes of cans to different levels of service for customers based on the level of service that they feel that they would need. There'd be the ability also to consider whether some of those services could just be done by means of specific miscellaneous service charges and not just included in the base rate that's being charged to all of your customers. That's really all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions, as is Bob.
If I could just say a few things in regards to this. I appreciate all the work you all have done. You all have been tremendous to work with, and I've learned a lot just from sitting and watching how you all have analyzed this whole problem, and I really do appreciate it. What I want to talk about real quick is, we've talked about this rate and what residents are paying right now. And one aspect that we have looked at shortly is what is the actual cost if we only had a landfill that was accepting waste from city residents? And if you did the analysis on that, you're looking at roughly $40.50, just to throw away a typical garbage cart of trash for a citizen. So if you look at that analysis, and that doesn't include any debt, it does include post-closure costs and some small capital items in the liner, but we're charging currently right now $18.50 below what we need to be charging to just break even. And I think that's significant. The other thing of significance is, I've said it in the past, I'm going to say it again, enterprise fund is supposed to operate in and of itself and not operate with any general fund transfers, which basically means it should operate like a private business. If this was a private business, it would have filed bankruptcy a long time ago and it would have been long gone. That's just a situation that this landfill is in. So with that being said, there are things that have to be looked at. We all know that. It's not pretty, but we're working on solutions. We're going to be presenting solutions throughout the spring so that we can make this landfill and collection division viable, and we hope to do that shortly and have some answers to you all before we really delve too deep into the budget cycle.
Okay. Well, thank you for your analysis and time here with the city. I say, I know a lot of work went into this. You spent a lot of time with each one of us going through a lot of the analysis, so I appreciate your time. I think this is one of the things, the good news is, this is one of the things that we need to address. So the good news is now we're at the point where we're going to address it. This council is committed to be a problem-solving council, and we had some other priorities up to this point, and so now this landfill's on our radar, and so your data is really going to help us focus on, you know, how we should think, what we should look at, follow-up analysis we're going to need to do, which we've kind of already talked about. We're going to have to take probably another level or a couple of levels of deeper dive into more data to really get creative about what all of our options are. So I think when we look at the scenarios available to us, we're going to have to look at all the scenarios. So there's, all the options are on the table, and it's going to take a lot of work to come up with those scenarios so we can make some very good decisions about which step to take first and how to move forward. So we'll be doing that pretty aggressively over the next six months as we move forward in the next budget cycle. So I appreciate you helping us, and I'm sure we'll be calling on you again to help with some other stuff. So any other comments from council?
I just had, sorry.
That's all right.
Just one quick question, and it's kind of a big-picture question about, you know, with you all, what you've done before. And, you know, with us, you looked at our rates, our revenue and our expenses and our debt, and I think, Bob, you mentioned you've been doing this for maybe close to 30 years now. So in your experience, have you seen another city, another locality that's in a similar position that we're in?
I have not seen another circumstance for a city or county or municipality that has the degree of debt that you have, that has the circumstances of inequity between cost of service and revenue. And I, those are the two main things that I would have to say, is in my experience, although municipalities do sometimes experience nominal transfers from the general fund to a solid waste enterprise fund, that has happened. It typically doesn't happen sustainable for decades, and it typically doesn't border on the quantity or the percentage of total revenue that the City of Bristol has. So I think that's the three main things to emphasize here, is in my experience, I've not seen that degree of debt service. As Vida mentioned, the $2.2 million a year out of a $6 million budget is rather dramatic, or the most dramatic that I've seen. The continuation of general fund transfer that averages about $600,000 a year and is necessary every year, and by the way, was necessary in both scenarios that Vida presented to continue, is atypical. And the extent to which the landfill continues to have an inequity between their actual cost to properly manage the waste and the revenue that is received by customers paying tipping fees is certainly unusual. I hope that answers the question.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else? All right. Thank you. All right. Final section for tonight, the consent agenda. So need a motion by council, a pleasure to approve as you see written for the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
A second.
Okay. Motion for Mr. Osborne, second Mr. Farnham. Any questions or discussions?
I just would point out, one of the items on there is the street closure for the Martin Luther King Jr. Parade. I encourage people, if they can, to come out for that event. I think last year was the first year they had done that. It's a very nice event, and I hope residents can come out if they have the time on that day.
All right. Thanks. All right. With that, please call the roll.
Yes.
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
Hereby adjourned.[1768.11]